Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today's November 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We are doing a remote meeting via Zoom. And we have a quorum. We have Marty Kane.
Yay.
Susan Roth.
Yay.
James Lowery.
Here.
Paul Green.
Here.
And I'm Rich Canong, the chairman. On the agenda, the first item is the call to order, which we just did the hard way. Approval of the agenda, approval of minutes for October 19th, 2021, and for the sidewalk on August 17th, 2021. We will then have public comment. After the public comment, we're going to be looking at the subdivision regulations, continuing review of the current regulations. The planner has sent out a handout for everybody. And let the record show that Susan Sinnet has now joined us. We will then have some other business. We'll be having a discussion regarding the process, actions, handouts. We'll look at ex parte communications. And then we'll have a discussion about ongoing meetings and what we're going to do from that perspective. I need someone to approve the agenda.
Yay.
Second.
Motion was made by Marty, seconded by Susan Roth. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes for October 19th, 2021.
Who was present?
I was not.
I think everybody, with the exception of Susan and Jamie, you weren't there, were you Jamie, like two weeks ago?
No, not on the 19th.
Right, with the exception of Susan and Jamie. It's the three of us, the four of us, because Susan was, Susan Sinnet was there.
Was that Holy Donuts?
No, this was the regular meeting, the last meeting.
The last meeting at the school, we talked about Cape Arundel cottages.
Yes.
Right. I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Second.
Motion was made by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane, to accept the minutes of October 19th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have, we have four in favor and two abstentions. Sidewalk minutes of August 17th, 2021.
That was Oak Ridge Terrace.
That was the sidewalk at Oak Ridge. I don't think we have a quorum. Were you with that one, Jamie? Do you remember?
Yes, I believe I was.
I was as well, Rich.
Okay, then we have the three of us, which would have constituted a sidewalk quorum. So we just need a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Susan, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three in favor?
I am staying because I wasn't there.
Right, three in favor, three abstentions. Onto the next item, public comment. We have a number of people that would like to address the board. And I'm going to start off with Neoto, because he was the first one in the meeting.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you for having me. As you may remember from two weeks ago, I was not aware of the section on cannabis lot that Lee pointed out. And I just wanted to double check, Lee, is that a section seven V six C that you were quoting?
That's not a local ordinance, Neoto. That is the state law.
So you were quoting local ordinance?
No, I was quoting the state law.
Right. And so was that the section about the 500 feet?
I don't have that. I don't have the state law in front of me, so I don't know what the citation is on that.
Okay, I believe it's section seven V six C, which says that you cannot have dispensary within 500 feet of pre-existing public and private school boundaries. And so I read through the state laws very carefully. And I believe that there is a misunderstanding between what I'm proposing, which I think it comes under section six, which is the caregiver section, rather than section seven, which is a dispensary. What mostly what section six describes is basically a garden. Section seven dispensary is all about retail, retail sales and such. I'm not asking to have my property to be able to be a dispensary. I believe that the state law allows me to grow up to three plants under my medical marijuana card. Yet, the, the Arundel ordinance for medical marijuana, which I am in the zone, appropriate zone, except for the fact that I have a preschool and a daycare next door to me within 1,000 feet, which actually makes it even more stringent requirement than the state law. Because there is no, under section six, there is no distance requirement or to relate it to school or any public school or private school and/or daycare or preschool.
Neoto, I need to question this because your original application had nothing to do with your ability to grow three medical marijuana plants. You wanted to grow them in the greenhouse out back and sell them to somebody else, who would then be using them down in the pit area.
That's me. I'm a partner. My name is Kevin McLeone. I'm a registered caregiver. I make cancer oils for patients. So I think, no, to my understanding, the page 33 talks about a registered dispensary being 500 feet from the school. And page, page 38 talks about advertising within 1,000 feet of a school. Neither of which we want to do. We're just trying to grow cannabis to make medicine.
Is that, is that the ordinance or is that the state law?
That's the statute.
We have no, we have no control over what that statute says. We have to follow that.
That's correct. You don't have any control over that. So what the state is saying is, we can't, as a registered dispensary, be within 500 feet of that school. And we are not a registered dispensary. We are caregiver.
But remember, remember that.
Rich, hey, Rich, excuse me.
Yes.
This is, this section is meant for public comment. And, you know, I think we've heard their comment. And to myself, I respectfully would say, let's, if Neoto has a altered or amended proposal that he wants to bring forward, let's get him on as an agenda item and move forward that way. Instead of hashing, you know, trying to debate this in a, in a setting that's meant for, you know, somewhat limited, brief public comment.
I think that's a great idea.
Taken, Jamie, thank you.
I think that's a great idea. Excuse me. And I'm all for that. But I just wanted to make sure that the comment that was, was made by Susan regarding, or Richard, regarding my proposal has changed in some way. I have never proposed that I would like to have a dispensary at my property. All I did was to ask permission to do the caregiver program. Yet, the Arundel Town Ordinance for Medical Marijuana Ordinance is, is restricting me because of the daycare and preschool next to me. That's all that I asked.
Rich, can I comment for a second?
I'm just gonna, Neoto, put that, contact the office, get an application, and put it, and start the process to get it in front of us.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you. The next one is Priscilla Coffin.
Hi. I have some questions about relating to lighting spill over from a neighbor. So my first question is, is there a lighting ordinance in Arundel?
There is a lighting ordinance in Arundel that affects commercial lighting. There is nothing that affects residential. So the residential lights that spill over onto your property, we have no control over. That, that would be something that you would have to address either to the codes enforcement officer. If he tells you that there's not much that he can do, you can appeal that to the zoning board of appeals, or you can, or you can go to superior court and sue your neighbor for whatever it is that, that a lawyer would say would be appropriate. But from a planning board point of view, we have no control over that.
Okay, but I was looking, I keep looking for lighting ordinances in the, in your ordinance documents. And I think this is from there. It's section five, performance standards. What does that mean? And is that only for commercial? Because as I read it, it says it's, lighting may be provided which serves security, safety, and operational needs, but does not directly or indirectly produce the liarist effects on abutting properties, which, or which would impair the vision of traveling public, blah, blah, blah. So that does, that does not apply to a residential area?
It does not apply to a residential area where the lighting is being generated by another residence. If it were commercial property, yes. Their original permit should have restricted their ability to shed light onto your property. But since this is a residential property shedding light onto another residential property, that's not something that the, this planning board addresses.
All right, then my next question is, yes, it is a residence, but it's related to a business.
It's a, it's a residence. And that's something neighbors have to settle between themselves.
But it's, but it's, and the tax assessor's information, it's listed under the name of the business.
Have you talked with the codes enforcement officer about it?
I, I have. And I've also talked with the town manager. And so I, I will talk with the code person, Jim Nagel again. So my next question is then, and I hear, I understand what you're saying. In conversations with a select person and also in a communication from the town manager, I have heard the terms a good neighbor standard. Are you familiar with that? And is it written anyplace in any document relating to the town?
I don't believe it's codified anywhere. I have heard it. But I don't think that we have it codified anywhere as to what that would be.
My understanding was that when the lighting became a problem at the new town hall, that the good neighbor standard was applied and the lighting was addressed.
And again, I would have to say that was between the commercial aspect of the town hall and a private residence. It did not come to us.
All right. So at this point, there's no way that I can come before the planning board and provide the information.
Correct. If, if you can get the codes enforcement officer to do anything, I would go that route. If he's not, and if you can show that he's not following the ordinance, you could go to the zoning board of appeals and appeal his decision.
Okay.
The planning board would, we wouldn't hear it because it hasn't, it's not part of our jurisdiction.
Okay. Well, I just, I just want to point out that that bright thing.
I can see.
Yep. That's from the other side of my fence in my neighbor's property.
I wish there was something we could do to give you some kind of a relief. But other than the codes enforcement and the zoning board of appeals, there's nothing that I know of that we would be able to do.
And this may be a dumb question to ask, but have you broached the topic with your neighbor?
I broached it in 2015. It was resolved in 2016 with a conversation between a neighbor and code. The individual was on the board of appeals at that time. And he finally agreed to shut the light off. And it was off until February of 2021, when it went back on. Today, I approached the neighbor and asked if we could have a conversation. And she said, absolutely not. I said, but the light was off for five years. And she said, no, it's been on every night. And you're, I'm very, very blind, or there's some. Yeah. And I just, it was very, it was a very uncomfortable conversation. And I only talked with the male individual once. It took a real act of courage to go over and do it again today with the female owner. And it was pretty clear that I'm not welcome on that property.
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
Is it in a residential development?
No.
No, it's not. It's my little piece of property is probably one of the smallest in Arundel. It's a quarter of an acre. At one time, it was part of the three quarters of acre that were, are beside me. And I just, my previous neighbors, the light was never on, was never a problem. Okay.
Is it related to a commercial? Is it related to commercial?
In, in some way, yes. It is under, the ownership is under the name of the, of the business.
For curiosity. I don't know if the codes enforcement officer knows that.
Oh, he does.
For curiosity, where is this located, if I may ask?
It's on Senate Road.
On Senate Road.
Okay. Priscilla, keep us in the loop. If you need to, to reach out to anybody, I would be the person that you want to reach out to on that. As the chairman, you would want to reach out to me or to Lee J. Feldman, the town planner.
Okay, I will do that. And my understanding, when I filed the complaint back in February, that there was going to be some follow-through, and there wasn't anything. Until I re-initiated it just a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. Did you, who did you talk to back in February?
Jim.
Okay.
And he said he would talk to Keith. And I never heard anything from either of them. But I did sit down with Keith yesterday. And I had a survey of my land with my structures on it. I was able to, with a yellow marker, I had showed where the light shone. I've spent $7,000 to keep this light out of my house. And I'm not asking that it be turned off. I think it could be shielded. But it's a very uncooperative situation.
Is it a floodlight?
It's a dusk to dawn streetlight type light. In addition to that, there are two motion sensitive floodlights on the corner of the garage, and there's a backdoor light. Yeah.
Can he reduce the wattage?
That's all something that, that has to go through Jim Nagel in codes. And he's got to, he's got to, he's got to do something first, and then she can go through ZBA. But from our, our point of view, you know, as much as we'd like to be able to help you, we're not involved, we can't be involved with this one because it doesn't affect anything that the ordinance gives us the right to review.
So, Rich, can I, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Is, you said that the property is owned by, you, I presume a corporate entity. Is, is the use a business use or is it a, is it a dwelling, you know, just household use?
May I answer that?
Yes.
Yes, that's who it's directed to.
Wow, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm really trying not to reveal too much about the ownership. I'm trying to be very careful in that. The, it is used as a residence for the business. But it's not adjoining it. The business is located further down the street.
It's kind of similar to a manager's, a manager's dwelling unit that is, that is part of the commercial property and somebody is staying there.
Okay. So it's used as a, for a residential purpose?
Yes.
Same tax purposes, is it to write out for the business, due to the business?
That probably doesn't, from a land use standpoint.
Okay.
And, and the residence is only used seasonally. So there are periods of time when it's totally vacant.
Okay.
All righty. Thank you, Rich. I appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. Hey, Joan, did you have, do you want to just listen in the background? Or do you have something you want to comment on?
No, I just wanted to listen to the presentation that Lee J. is going to do about conservation. That's what I'm.
Mike? Mike Neto, are you there? Evidently not, he went away.
He's, he looks like he's muted, Rich.
He is, but he's muted on his end.
Okay.
Thank you for the information. I was never told that I could take it to the zoning board of appeals. And so.
Every, anytime that you disagree with what the code enforcement officer says or what the planning board says, you have the right to appeal it to the zoning board of appeals.
And I am going to guess that the reason that the individual agreed to turning off the light was that he was on the zoning board of appeals at that time and didn't want me to come before him.
It's quite possible.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening. Take care.
Bye, Priscilla.
Yep, thanks.
And then the next person would be Jerry. Oh, okay. Not a problem, Mike. We, I just didn't know if you had anything you wanted to say.
You need to get your grandkids to help you, Mike. That's what I do.
He's too young for grandkids.
Yeah, he is. He's way too young for grandchildren.
35.
Yeah, he's too young for grandchildren. You're not allowed to start when you're 16.
So, excuses.
Okay, Jerry, do you have any, any comments that you would like to make for the board about non-agenda items? And I'm going to assume that that answer is no.
She was muted. Hold on a second.
Okay.
I apologize for that. I'm just listening. Thank you. Hello?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for telling us you're just listening. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good night. Okay. Lee J. Ordinance review, subdivision regulations, continued review. We have the information that Lee J. sent to us.
Did you want to try to do a screen share for folks or do you have the presentation to put up, Rich?
I have the presentation. I don't know if any, if everybody else has it or not. And I don't know how to do the screen share. Oh wait, share the screen. I don't know which screen it's going to share. But we'll find out.
All right, on mine, it's showing as green, share the screen. And it says host disabled participant screen sharing. So you have disabled.
He has to share that he, yet you can share the screen.
I can share the screen. I think I wanted to.
Lee J. is share your screen.
Go to share screen, click there you go.
There we go. Looks like that's on yours, Rich. So I'm not sure I will be able to move the screen. But you will if I just ask you to.
You just asked me to move it up and I'll move it to the next slide.
Yep, okay. So this, this kind of came about through a conversation with Rich and I. It's not anything to do with the current cluster ordinance provisions that you folks have worked on recently. And it doesn't have anything really to do with the current subdivision regulations. But in conversation with Rich, I thought this would be a good opportunity to bring this concept forward for discussion purposes and see if it's something the board is interested in working on, excuse me, over months to develop. But it's actually called conservation subdivision design. This particular presentation is noted, was done by Carolyn Russell from New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. And we do have some local ordinance, local, local being state of mind ordinance models that we can use to work from if it's something that the board is interested in pursuing. Go ahead and change the page, Rich.
I'm gonna try.
Okay. So while he's, while he's looking to do that, basically what conservation subdivisions do is try to show or do show more respect for the land in the sense that rather than possibly crossing streams or filling and impacting wetlands in order to accommodate development, it tries to preserve, excuse me, as much of that area as possible in the design. And in doing such, it really begs itself the opportunity for the planning board to work in conjunction with the developer through the process. So for example, at a sketch level review, it may be a couple of sketch levels, sketch level meetings that need to occur in order to work through a design that everybody's happy with. It sets up the opportunities for creating more buffers, buffers around environmental features, buffers around access to the site. It tries to minimize the impact from, there we go, from roads and other infrastructure. So conservation subdivision design goes beyond the simple goal of clustering buildings together and preserving a portion of the parcel as open space. Conservation subdivision is based on the natural and cultural resource attributes of the property, reflects the broader environmental and social goals of the community, and allows for greater flexibility in design to provide for greater natural resources. Excuse me. Now, one of the things that the last piece really attributes to is that when we see regular subdivisions come through, you know, we'll see a two-acre lot in a, in a parcel that encompasses a lot of wooded area, for example, as part of the landowner's ownership for their parcel when they purchase it. What this does is try to preserve as much of that in common area rather than allowing a individual property owner who may decide at a later date that he wants to clear cut the rest of his property. It, it acts in a way that as many as possible of the owners, their lots do not encumber those. their lots do not encumber those conservation areas. Uh, go ahead, Rich. So this is an example of a conventional subdivision versus a conservation design. The top, um, top design of course is a conventional subdivision, it's got the same number of units on it um, as the lower design, but you're also preserving, you're also saving ten to fifty percent less impervious surface, which, you know, in many cases you would think or hope the developer would be thankful for because it's not costing them as much money to put that, um, infrastructure in place. Uh, and it also acts really well with stormwater, for example, because it's less infrastructure, because it's not as spread out and you don't have as many, well, you have as many driveways, but in a different design rather than, you know, some folks having a hundred and fifty foot paved driveway, um, that much of the houses are clustered closer together and shorter distances from the roads. But that all comes with working and working with the developer on the design. It doesn't come from any required standards that, um, the zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations would explicitly, um, provide. And you can see, uh, between the top, top design, the conventional design and the lower conservation design, the, um, general impact it has on preservation of land. Go ahead, Rich. So part of that review process, it's a little bit different than, than the way we do it now, but we get the detailed site inventory for the parcel, um, features and conceptual plan submitted prior to a formal application, i.e. the sketch design. But hopefully at that point, they would have as much of the environmental information as possible um, to provide to the board so that we know what we're working with, um, as we, as we go forward. Go ahead.
Question.
Go ahead, Marty.
On that thought and design with being as close as they are, some of it depends on your soil, but also what alternatives are there for substitutes for septic and water being as close? And then also as in a case which we were just speaking of, light pollution.
Yep, um, light pollution, um, well, for example, there, there, there's a lot in that question, Marty, I mean, it's a great question. Um, so I live in a brand new development myself, um, and the streetlights that the developer put in, um, he was not required to, but he put them in, are LID streetlights, um, or LED streetlights, excuse me, for LID purposes, low impact development. And, um, they're not bright. Um, and, you know, there again, many of those types of subdivisions that we're talking about would have covenants in them and not require, um, or not, not allow for bright lights to be, um, outside the house, um, they would be, you know, deed restricted in some manner. Um, where you would only have security down, downlit security lighting, it couldn't shine on the neighbors. In fact, um, my covenants indicate that, um, I can't have bright floodlights in my backyard or on my back deck. Um, so therefore no light pollution gets into my neighbor's yards. Um, the other part of that question was regarding septic system designs. Uh, there's a couple of things in relation to that, that new septic systems, um, are, can be and are um, much more efficient than the older septic systems that we're all familiar with. Um, they, they are very efficient, um, and they, um, are much cleaner, actually. But there's also the opportunity for community septic systems to be put in in situations, um, like this where they can put in a cluster, a cluster septic system design, um, like one that we're, we're actually looking at in another project. I won't get into details about that because it's not in front of us this evening. But, um, where you can have a number of homes put into, uh, one septic system leach field area uh, and, and it works very well. Um, so there are options out there and that becomes part of that whole discussion uh, with a developer, um, as they work through this conservation subdivision process. Go ahead, Rich. So again, um, you know, this just shows how the developer would need to provide us with the prime conservation areas and that would also include, for example, um, which you folks do, um, quite a bit, is require a high intensity soil survey. Um, so that we can see where the good soils are and where the bad soils are and how they're going to work amongst that. Um, we do that anyway, but, um, this just makes it more formalized as part of the design process so that we're able to work with the applicant, um, during design. Go ahead, Rich. So then step two, um, is identifying secondary conservation areas such as fields, meadows, um, wildlife corridors, or if there are any, that they can identify, um, where they're located, uh, as well as, um, you know, wooded areas, few corridors, um, and meadows, uh, and fields. And, um, work with them so that they can work around that as much as they, uh, much as they're capable of doing and being able to get the densities in that are still allowed. Go ahead. So then, um, step three is the identification of potential areas for development. Um, where they would, you know, say, you know, show us that, that field area where it says potential development area in yellow, much of that is a field area and it's outside the, um, you know, um, high travel area for, for, um, wildlife corridors and, and that sort of thing. And so they're able to, excuse me, identify the highest potential areas for the development to occur. And, and a lot of this stuff can happen, you know, in one or two meetings. It doesn't have to be meeting after meeting after meeting or, you know, they can provide a lot of this information uh, as we start our process with them. Go ahead, Rich.
Question.
Yes, Marty.
Would, on that idea and thought, maintenance or anything else, would any of that open space or anything else, would that be used for recon- recreational? Or would that be possibly for agricultural farming or anything else? Since you have such a greater area for like hay or anything else? And who would maintain it?
So, the, um, there, you ask these great questions, Marty, there's a lot to those, those, the answers that I can provide you. Um, so, you know, a lot of that open space, um, again, I think it's, it becomes part of a negotiation between the planning board and the developer, whether or not they're, um, publicly accessible or only accessible to the developers, uh, to the, to the homeowners and the residents. Um, you know, I think if we wanna, for example, link it up with, um, with, uh, any of the other conservation trails in the neighborhood and, in the, in the town, then, um, I think we certainly try to seek out that opportunity um, to work with the, the local land trust, the conservation committees and the developer, um, as we've been doing recently on Arundel's keep with the conservation easement type of situation. Um, relevant to farming and whatnot, you know, I think that really, that, that can be accomplished. I think it's, the question is, as you asked, who's gonna do it? And, um, in some cases, who's gonna get the money from it? You know, is that something that the association, if there's a homeowner's association, do they allow that field to be haved and they, um, get the sale of the hay and use that money maybe for conservation trails or other issues that are in that area? Or how would, you know, how would we work that? And I think that's, that's a negotiation, I think, between the planning board and the developer to make something happen if there's really potential for that to happen. I think every project is gonna, um, every project's gonna have a, um, different situation to deal with, they're not all gonna be the same. And, um, it gives us the opportunity on a project by project basis to negotiate that. And, and that type of language would need to be built into the ordinance, um, to the guidance in the ordinance for the developer knowing that, um, in return for doing what they're doing, they're gonna have to give something up, um, with the board in a negotiation.
Well, I was thinking of community farming.
Lee J, I have a question and a comment.
Go for it.
Okay, so my question is, my, uh, is the state of Maine moving in this direction uh, as a whole? And, or is Arundel, uh, the tip of the spear? Um, I think it's great and I think it's clear that the planning board was sort of uh, quietly moving in this direction anyway when we tried to broker a relationship between the conservation trust and Arundel's keep and giving, uh, you know, cluster development more flexibility, uh, based on the quality and the configuration or the topography of the land. So I think we're already thinking as a planning board uh, of this, if not, uh, you know, implicitly, uh, but also somewhat explicitly as well. And then I mentioned to Rich, I just think this is, uh, on a side note, that Arundel's keep is for sale. The whole, uh, you know, development, uh, the plans and the property uh, before it's been developed. So I thought that was pretty interesting, it's listed on Zillow. And so, um, I, I don't know, you know, what any of you think about it, it's just, uh, after all of the um, discussions we had with Jason and everybody, I think it's, uh, interesting that it's for sale, so.
It might have been.
No value judgment, just a comment.
It might have been a very wise business decision because he's now got the, the permits and everything over in place and he can sell it and make his money. Recapture his, his original price and a little bit more and walk away and let somebody else have the headache of development.
I totally agree, I mean, it wasn't a, I wasn't making a, um, a judgment, I just thought, um, too, Rich, that he gotten all his ducks in a row.
Yeah.
And now it made the property much more saleable, but, um, you know, that was our first foray into brokering some kind of a relationship between, uh, act and a developer. And I think it's a good thing.
And, and just so that everyone knows, I mean, we can't talk about this project because it has been put to bed, there are no approvals required or anything, and it's a great, um, example of what you're talking about, Susan. Um, as of late, as late as today, um, I have received emails from, um, the developer's attorney and the attorney from our organization um, that's been working on this and all of that documentation and the conservation easements and everything are continuing to move forward. So just because the development is for sale doesn't mean any of that other stuff is falling through, it is still.
Right, and I think that's a great thing, I think actually that's an enhancement.
Uh, yes, yeah, sure.
Um, I just thought as a side note, it was kind of interesting.
Yeah, so back to your original question, if I may.
One question more.
Maine, you know, Maine is, is an interesting place, as you know, um, these types of processes do occur um, in some towns, not a lot in southern Maine. I don't actually think that there's anybody in southern Maine that actually has conservation subdivision regulations like this. Um, being a, a, a home rule state, you know, everybody does their own thing, if you will, within the confines of, of the state subdivision regulations. Um, so it's not, this is not something that is a hotbed and moving forward. It's been around for a long time, it just hasn't been talked about a lot. And, um, not many towns have really embraced this process.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Would this also qualify as a possibility of, of low income housing? As a, uh, a tag with it?
I would doubt that very much, I, I hate to, well, I hate to say.
I'm thinking, when we have talked about it before, would something, would that possibly fit in?
Um, I, it, it, it could, Marty, depending on how high a densities, um, the developer wants to use, I mean, I, I see this, um, ending up being a tool that's gonna be used for, for higher end housing in many cases. But definitely if, you know, and that, just like subdivision, if you can get higher densities, that makes development, excuse me, development more affordable. Um, or houses more affordable because they can get more houses in on smaller lots. But, you know, the thing that, that Arundel doesn't have, as we know, is sewer. Um, and so those densities can't go any higher than twenty thousand square feet per lot. Um, and when I say higher, I mean, some communities go as low as five thousand square feet per lot. Uh, Arundel doesn't, can't, doesn't do that and can't do that. So it's gonna be a limiting factor as to whether or not someone can do, um, quote unquote, an affordable housing project. And that's a very, very term, you know, affordable housing in, in my dictionary is affordable to the middle class person. Um, other people see or have put, um, in their minds that affordable housing is low, moderate income housing, there is a difference. Um, but affordable housing is someone like myself, you know, middle, middle income, um, can afford, um, you know, the eight hundred thousand dollar home. Um, but can afford the, you know, in today's market, the two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar home.
Thank you.
Yep, so, um, go ahead and, and, well, this would be, that's a concept of, of a general layout and then this is what a final, um, layout might look like. Um, all utilizing that same piece of land, all you, utilizing, um, the conservation, um, process. And you can see, you know, if you wanna, um, if you can just go back for a second, Rich, um, you can see the, the, the spine, if you will, down in the lower left of that white area where houses could be, could be linear along the, parallel to the, um, um, road and then the cluster up above, and then go ahead forward again, Rich. If you look at the, the final design, how they've been able to utilize um, those two areas to, to get, um, all of their development into that same location. Um, and then you can see where they've built in, um, trails, um, attached the trail, trails to, um, what they're calling a rock outcropping, for example, on that piece of property. Um, they've put in a, a cabin in this case, you know, maybe it's, um, uh, uh, an area where people can go for solitude, um, in that area. But it's a hundred and forty acre parcel, um, they've put forty-two houses on it and, um, protected ninety-seven of that hundred and forty acres. Um, that's not too bad, you know, that's a pretty, pretty well-thought-out design for this particular piece of property, just showing what, um, conservation subdivisions can look like. Um, so I mean, that's, that's all I have in this presentation, it does go on and on further, but it's more about ordinance structure in New Hampshire than in Maine. Um, I, I can get a couple of ordinance models if it's something you wanna continue to talk about and look at. Um, uh, one of my sister agencies, um, up in, I believe it was, uh, Kennebec Valley, KV cog, number of years ago now, um, actually wrote, um, a model cluster subdivision ordinance um, that the state has available to us if we wanna look at that. So again, um, the top, top, um, plan there is the cluster subdivision that came out. Nope, the one you were just on, um, Rich. Yep, the top, the top part of that slide is that cluster, excuse me. And the bottom part is, um, you know, more of a traditional design. And you can see that, um, the road is longer, it's much more linear, the length, the length of the road rather than a small loop road with the, you know, a nice meadow area in between. Um, and houses just lined throughout it, and you can see that, um, the houses beyond the second cul-de-sac, you know, that's a traditional subdivision, you can see those lots go all the way back down in through those, that, that wooded area and those areas where, um, where, um, there are, um, you know, what's the word I'm looking for, uh, where the, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Where the yeah, what's my train of thought? Wildlife corridors exist. And in the cluster subdivision, the lots are much smaller. They're not allowed to encumber by individual owners all the way down through that wooded area. And those are some of those trade offs, if you will, that would be negotiated with the developer during the process.
Yeah, my, my thoughts on having Lee J. share this is I like the idea of being able to generate that kind of open space here in the center, along with everything else. If we want to maintain open space. And if we don't want to maintain open space, we can always go with something that looks like this.
Well, and the other thing that I'll throw out that Rich and I talked about is I know that, you know, there's a desire to buffer the main roads so that the houses aren't necessarily right up on the road. And you can see by this design, even on that front cul-de-sac, the houses are only placed on the inside of that road and not on the main arterial frontage. So you're kind of pulling all of the homes back and off from the main roads.
I think these are all very positive ideas for future developers. And obviously, Lee J., you'll have these in your quiver as developers come to you to show them alternative ideas to plotting out the use of their property and future development. And until we come to some agreement on whether or not we're going to codify or formalize ideas about open space and cluster development. But I think this all is moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I mean, certainly without having an, an ordinance or a guidance document in place. The more I work with you folks, you know, I, I haven't really had the opportunity to see a subdivision from beginning to end, including even one that we're still waiting to come in. It's already been through sketch. But you know, the message I can send to the developers as I talk with them about future subdivisions is the desire of the board and what we want to see and really try to finesse that into designs and processes like this without an ordinance in place until we choose to go in that direction. If, if the board or the, the voters of the town want to go in that type of a direction.
Question.
Go ahead, Marty.
Would that qualify for 55 and older?
That's an ownership issue. That's something that we won't necessarily get into in design.
Think it in general.
Yeah, it, it certainly could be. It's again, it's an ownership issue, not a design issue. So if a developer wanted to do a plus 55 and, and come in with a design like that, they're certainly capable of doing that.
How would that affect with impact fees?
Well, considering we really don't have impact fees.
I know that, but I'm just, that is a question.
Marty, could you talk closer? I can't really hear you. Or have a microphone closer to you?
So impact fees are a local control type of issue. You know, some towns have them, some towns don't. You know, when an ordinance for an impact fee is written, there may be an opportunity to build in waiver allowances for certain circumstances. So if someone's coming forward with a, you know, a, a plus 55 community and they want to try again to keep housing costs at a, at a level that more plus 55 folks can, can afford. They could certainly, if it's built into the regulations, they could certainly seek a waiver of having to provide impact fees. If that's what you're asking, Marty.
Yes.
Yep.
We've addressed it before, but it's never gotten anywhere.
Yeah, that's a whole.
I know it's a whole nother ballgame.
Yeah. So why don't we, you know, stick with.
Thank you. We'll leave it alone.
Would it, would something like this in our ordinance require a rewrite or simply a presentation by the developer? Saying, I want to do a clustered subdivision and this is what it's going to look like?
Well, that's a, that's a, another great question, if you will, Rich. And I think that's a policy decision amongst you folks. Once we get there, it's certainly, you know, do we, do we require it or do we just encourage it? And that's certainly something that if we go down the road of developing an ordinance for this type of development that you'd want to discuss and make a decision on.
Okay.
Question. Could it be an option?
Of course.
I mean, I mean, one way or here, here's another option. Do we need a whole new ordinance for it or because it's a whole new idea?
So, um, you don't necessarily need an ordinance for it. Some communities that I work with, and I certainly can't take credit for it, their ordinances have been in place for a while. Require that when you come in for sketch review, you come in with both a cluster design as well as a traditional design. And then the board will look at those choices and suggest to the developer which direction they want the application to go.
Like I said, with the option, they, it gives them both ways instead of just being stuck with one way.
Well, it gives, it gives them both ways, but I really also think in some instances or most instances, it gives the board the opportunity to really move the developer in a certain direction.
Right. Well, similar, similar to what happened out at Arundel's Keep when the suggestion was made to them, if you did this, it would work out better.
Right.
And I, I think this would be great. I think this would also be a good opportunity to, to help the Conservation Trust build the trails around town with, so that if they wanted to expand out for hiking or whatever, they would be able to do so.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I think I like the whole idea and I think we need to go look at it, but what worries me is what's going to stop me if I go with this, this top design, right? What's going to stop me from down the road coming back if I don't have something in the ordinance that makes them actually put this in a trust? What's going to stop you from, what's going to stop me as the developer from coming back saying, hey, I got all this other land. I got 97 acres. I'm going to put another development in.
What would stop him? What would stop him would be, you know, a condition of the approval that that land be kept open in perpetuity. So that it's on the plan, so that it's recorded in the registry, you know, he can come forward with that. But anybody in my position, or, you know, in planning board, if there's a long-term chairman or board members in place, like some of you folks are, is saying, you know, there was a condition on that previous approval that said X, Y, and Z. And we're not going to allow additional development to occur there.
My life, my life has changed. I now need to sell this in order to live. I'm going to take it to the board. zoning board of appeals. I got 97 acres and you're telling me I can't build on it?
Yep.
That's right.
Thinking there's got to be something in the ordinance that as part of this forces it at that point to be in the trust and not just owned by the, the association, so to speak.
Oh, no.
But well, and
You're, you're missing what Lee J. is saying. This will be a documented trust. It will be there.
It could go HOA. It, it could go to the Conservation Trust just as the land is getting the easement for Arundel's Keep. You know, there, there are just a number of tools out there, but it includes the conditions of approval that once they're on the plan, it's pretty tough to go back and get those taken off.
It, I understand if we have it, so it goes to a trust like that now. But if they just say, I'm need this open land to be, either I'm going to manage it or it's going to be managed by the association. That's the one that worries me. Not the one that goes to the trust. Once it's in the trust, I get it. It's gone. It's the ones, like for example, the one out behind me is open space that is not going to a trust. It's being held by the owner. It could build on that down the road. Right? So that's, that's why I think we, I like it. I think we got to look at it. And I think there needs to be some teeth in it that forces the trust issue.
Oh, sure. And, and I
Keep in mind that some subdivisions, you know, aren't necessarily a conservation subdivision. They're just, they've retained some open space to do something at a later date. They haven't maxed out their number of lots that are permitted within the subdivision. You know, presumably on a conservation subdivision, they would calculate their lot density and then say, you can get, you know, for instance, 20, 20 houses on that parcel. And that's how it would, would max out unless something changed in the underlying zoning.
Correct.
Yeah. No, I, I, I get that, Jamie. I understand that. I'm not, I'm not trying to throw comparisons in the two. I'm just trying to make sure that there's something there that really locks it in. So down the road, you don't get bamboozled into 30 more houses or something else.
And right, completely. I mean, and that's where, that's the importance of really scrutinizing the final subdivision plan and documents to make sure that, you know, the things that are, are sort of discussed and are part of the, the conversation along the way are, are sort of codified, for lack of a better word, in the, the open space criteria that would, would regulate what is allowed to occur in that open space. Like you say, 20, 30 years from now.
Right. To the chair, please.
Yes, Susan.
I just, I think that as a, as we're doing ordinance is making things more stringent and more clear. Now their, their applications and what we're accepting. So that when there is a code issue or something issue, it's stated what, that it is an issue that we've accepted or not accepted. I mean, if it's this, this is a conservation cluster, they would obviously present that initially as their presentation as a conservation cluster versus a a different subdivision, as James was talking about. I'm just saying, so make sure that there are things in there, that it's, there's no gray. Do you know what I mean? So it's, it's set up that what you've decided, what you've said isn't assumed. And what is, has happened in the past and it's actually stated so that there, if there is anything that is done or taken, there's some meat to go back to and say, I'm sorry, you broke the agreement that was agreed to versus well, there's, this is a little bit of a loophole. That's what I thought we were discussing for making it really clear on what we want. And then when they make presentations, what they're really clear on what they're asking for and presenting to.
But I think that's what Susan, excuse me, I think that's what Jamie was speaking to, that as agreements are made and promises are offered and accepted, that they have to be codified in some way through legal channels so that it's not just you know, a handshake, so to speak, that becomes negotiable and arguable down the road. And I think that's what's happened in some instances and the way to sort of avoid that is what Jamie suggested. And that is just make sure everything is entered legally in the documents as the permits are being blessed. So.
And respectfully, that we have the ordinance that are, that are clear. And not, oh, what could that be? What could that be? Because I think that's what we were talking about before. What is this? What is that? Like we're talking about before buffering conversation of what buffering is and now we've made it much more stringent, or at least we've started to talking about the, what live tree, what is not live tree, the height of a thing, thing specifics versus it just being a buffer.
Yeah.
I think we're all in violent agreement here.
Yeah, I agree. Both specifically and generally, Paul.
Okay, I'm going to stop the share now.
Yep. Okay. So yeah, I mean, I think this, you know, this is, was a, it's a good first step to put out there for, for you folks and you know, see how you want to proceed in the future. You don't need to say, let's do it tonight or anything like that. I think there's a lot to absorb and a lot to think about, but it's certainly another option to consider going forward.
Well, I also think that as, as we go through this process, if a developer comes along with a sub-development that you think this would be good for, let's go for it.
Right, absolutely.
If they're willing, because as long as it's clustered, it meets the cluster subdivision, we just need to codify a whole bunch of other stuff along with it.
Well, I mean, it's like, you know, the way I, the way I've always operated, whether it's in other towns or when I worked for a particular community, when I get to start with a developer from day one and talk about stuff, you know, if I know what the general sentiment among the board, amongst the board is, and I kind of know where you folks are at, I try to really work with the developer and maneuver them into, you know, the situation so that they're kind of doing what we'd really like to see. And that way they know that their path is a lot easier to get approvals than it's going to be if, you know, they're bucking the system, if you will.
Let me, let me ask you this one question.
Yep.
In, on that, on the, on the plan that we see with all of the clustered housing around the oval in the center. It doesn't look as if those are two acre lots and that, I'm not sure what the, what the requirement was in this instance, but let's, assuming that it was two acres, this looks more like they, they might be one acre or maybe a little bit less. But they're all clustered together because they have joint ownership of all of the other property?
Well, again, they could be, it could be in an HOA, it could be in a Conservation Trust, it could be in some other tool that's used. Yeah. But you're looking at 140 acres. Let me see if I can do this real quick.
It's about a third of an acre, I think.
No, because there were what, 40?
42 house lots. So three, 3.3 acres. You know, it's three acre attributed to three acre density in that development. So it's, it's the type of thing that can work. You know, again, a lot, a lot depends on what the zoning is, what the allowable density is. And how many acres are we talking? You know, what is, what is the developer? Is he coming forward with 100 acres, 200 acres, 10 acres? You know, I mean, that's where a lot of it's going to come into play as well as what, what are we dealing with, with, for a raw piece of land? And what is the zoning going to allow him to do? Generally speaking.
And ultimately, what are the natural limitations of the land? You know, how, how much of a cluster does it make sense to do? You know, i.e. if you've got poor soils, you know, a two acre lot might not make a lot of sense to go down to a half acre lot. It need, you know, maybe should be something, an acre to acre and a half, whatever we, you know, would. I think with whatever, whatever ordinance we put together, you've got to have that that framework as best as possible with all the different, you know, it's tough because of all the different variables to say, we're going to allow, you know, a two acre lot to go down to a one acre lot, but no less than that, you know, things along those lines.
And it, and it certainly comes back to part of the negotiations during the process.
Right.
I think it's, it's, it's one of those things where we have to say, yes, we're, we're looking at it, but we need to remember Todd's great, Todd, Ted's great thing with soils analysis. He had it saying, is it suitable to build on this property? If it is, great. If it's not, well, you know, if it's not, you may not be able to do a regular clustered subdivision.
Right.
It, it all depends on what the soils look like. Lee J., while I think of it, I'm going to forward you an email. I don't know if you've got this one. I don't know if you've got this one.
Okay.
Uh, it came into me.
Okay.
I don't wanna reply. I hit the, I hit the wrong button. I wanna forward it, not reply.
Is it for part of this conversation or?
Oh, this is something that you may wanna put. It relates to what happened at the last meeting.
Okay. Um, do you want to move on to the next conversation or?
Unless, unless there's some more stuff that people wanna look at from the conservation subdivision.
I think we have a lot to think about.
I think we do. I think we've got a lot. Yes, Joan?
Uh, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, I think this is extremely exciting and as a citizen of Arundel, never mind being part of ACT, I think it's very exciting, um, being able to work together with a group that's trying to look forward and look for the best use of land and uh, keeping some of the special places in Arundel. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to other business. Lijie will facilitate discussion regarding the board process, actions and conduct.
Oops.
And you have.
That doesn't sound good. Have we been bad?
It doesn't sound.
No, 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 no.
It, it doesn't sound like it's a three minute discussion.
Wait, I was out of town.
The trainings that we went to for four hours, is this very similar to that?
Probably.
Oh my God, don't say four hours.
No, we went to those, those already.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna take four hours, trust me. Um, I think these are just like little refreshers um, that I wanna bring forward for the board, um, just as reminders. Um, there's other stuff that I'm gonna, you know, bring forward at other meetings as well. This really doesn't have anything to do with anything at all that's, that's occurred recently. But it's one of those, you know, in this particular case, it's just a conversation about um, ex parte communications and um, how, I, I, the only words I can use is how the board members wanna conduct themselves, but it's really not how you conduct yourself, but it's just being careful as far as um, communications of an application that may be in front of you at the time. So that, you know, it even goes to the point where I um, I could do it as a staff person, but I know it would happen to planning board members as well. You live in your town. You know, you go to the supermarket and someone grabs you and says, hey, you know, what, what about this project that's in front of the board right now? Um, it's really, but you as a board member um, should not have any conversation about that particular project if it's an active application in front of you. Um, because you may say, well, you know, this is how I feel. And then if that person comes to the meeting and says, well, you said, or you told me, um, then you've really jeopardized yourself as a voting member uh, on an application. Um, and so this, this piece just talks generally about ex parte communications. Um, you know, board members should not talk to other board members um, about uh, an active application um, to try to persuade votes or anything like that. So I mean, I don't wanna spend a lot of time unless there are questions on it, but I just wanted to bring it forward as a piece of, piece of information for you and just something for us all to remember um, as part of the whole planning board process, um, is the whole ex parte communication issue. It's a, it's a um, important issue um, on every project that we have in front of us. So you know, if someone asks you a question about a particular project, send them to the, send them to the planner, you know, send them to me, um, as long as I'm working with you or send them to whoever may be after me. Um, but um, just say, you know, why don't you, you know, why don't you, why don't you give Lijie a call? Um, talk to him about it. Um, he might have more information than I do. Um, but don't, don't let yourself get caught being engaged in conversation that could jeopardize yourself as a voting member of the board. That's all. Yes, sir.
Am I guilty?
I don't know, are you?
Nah, I'm just asking, cause usually, because of me, I'm just saying, did I do something wrong? I don't know.
No, no, no one's done anything wrong. Again, there's, there's other, other um, aspects of the planning board knowledge that you folks ought to have and I'll be bringing that stuff forward as well. Um, even to the point where one of the things that I developed for Kenabunkport several years ago was what I call the process within the process. So it actually walks you through um, how the process ought to occur on an application at a meeting or at several meetings. Um, and then we've got you know, I've got other examples of, of what, when you should act as a um, juror versus when you should act as a policymaker. Um, because there is a difference. When you're dealing with a, with a zoning text or zoning map amendment, um, you have different abilities to discuss certain things rather than what you have or don't have is an ability to do that same um, entertain those same conversations during a development project. And I, you know, I can bring that piece forward as well. Um, so no, no one's done anything um, wrong or, or anything. This just happens to me, the first topic of information I thought I'd bring forward.
Um, uh, Lijie, just in light of what's happened to me since I returned uh, from my travels, that in error, uh, the um, town clerk gave a resident my personal telephone number and my email address to discuss a matter that she felt should come before the planning board or she wanted specific advice from me and I directed her to Rich and to Lijie and she continued to call me and it's very tough because, you know, you feel badly that these things happen and, but, but it's hard to impress upon people that Lijie and Rich are the people that should be receiving their phone calls and not individual members of the planning board.
And, and yeah, and that, that particular instance, it's a little different only because, but, but you're absolutely right. And I think
or a thing before us, but.
Right, but and, and I know that I think that there's been some discussion in town hall already that, that for the purposes that were given, phone numbers were given out, they should not be given out in the future. So hopefully that won't happen to anybody.
Okay, I mean, you know, but I just meant that I kept getting called for advice and I kept trying to direct that individual to you guys and
Right, right.
Anyway.
So the other quick, the other thing about the ex parte communications is that, that also goes to email. Um, you know, I think it's mentioned on the back of this, on the other side of this piece, if you got both sides um, when Anne sent it out. That, you know, that is another form of communication. It's a more modern form, of course, as we know. But um, if someone sends you an email asking you questions about an application, including other board members, um, don't, don't engage. Um, I know in other places I've seen emails come out from a board member and has copied all of the board members on it um, and making statements about, about project. And you know, I will respond and say, please do not respond to that email or do not communicate on that email because that can jeopardize the, you know, the whole review process for better or worse, um, when, when a project is, is active in front of the board. Communicate with me, you know, I mean, really.
I think if, if you look at it, I think Marty, Jamie, Tom, who was not on, and I were the only four board members that were here that gotten, got served by the Dubois back in the day when they were doing their thing. And at that point, they wanted our emails off our computers, but we were able to say, all of that goes through town hall.
Yes, that's.
Because it was all through TAD. So, you know, there was no way this side of God's green acres, they were getting access to my computer.
Yes.
I've got way too, too much information on here of a confidential nature.
Yeah, we've been through this before.
We have, and we don't wanna go through it again.
No.
When it comes to email, when it comes to uh, phone calls, when it comes to getting together and having a meeting over lunch, just don't discuss it. That's the easiest way to do it. If you, if there's more than three people in that meeting, it's an illegal meeting.
Well, if three people would constitute an illegal meeting, yes. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can get together for lunch.
We, we need to be careful. I can't call Marty and discuss something with him and then call Susan and discuss the same thing with her and then call the other Susan and talk with her about it and try to sway their opinion about what's going on. It's, we can't do that.
Right.
As much as we like to, because we all want everybody on our side.
So anyway, it's just a, just one of those reminders, um, you know, be careful of those communications and um, you know, don't hesitate to send everything through me or to me, um, as the staff person. Uh, I can, I can communicate with anyone and, and everyone on it. You folks as judge and jury cannot.
Lee?
Yes.
Like, it's like Rich just said, we went through the, the whole gamut.
Right.
Uh, it was amazing how we were being blamed for stuff that we never did. And I think we all learned even though we weren't guilty of it, we even learned more about backdoor techniques of trying to be blamed for something.
Yep, yep. Yep, you just never know when that, you know, when that's gonna happen, so.
Isn't that right, Rich?
Yeah, yeah. I, I learned more than I wanted to know about civil law. Mostly, mostly it's anything but civil, but.
So that's all I had um, for tonight. And I know, Rich, you wanna bring up some other.
I wanna bring up, Marty had a point about continue, about Zoom and continuing to get together face to face in light of the fact that we appear to be in on the upswing in all of our COVID cases. If you followed what the CDC has said, we are going in the wrong direction here in the state of Maine. Having talked with the Board of Selectment and talked with the Town Manager, I found out that if, if we're going to go back to meeting this way on Zoom, we can do so. But in order for us, I, I get to make that call, but I'm not gonna make that call unless everybody wants to go back and meet on Zoom.
What's the difference from when we said this before, when we wanted to not go back in person? Even though it was still on the uptick then too. I'm just curious, I want to go back to Zoom, but I'm just curious, why is it different from when we had this, we went to the meeting and I went to the meeting and you had already made the decision to the selectmen?
The, the selectmen had said we could not.
No, the selectmen have changed their minds?
The selectmen having changed their mind, they've given it some more thought. You look like you're gonna jump in there, Lijie.
Well, no, I was just gonna say, um, I wasn't going to go in the selectman direction, other than the fact that as you may or may not be aware, that um, there was a state law that was passed and it allowed um, every board and every community to adopt a policy um, of when, when you can zoom and when you cannot zoom. Um, and that policy has been adopted by the town. Um, and even though the governor hasn't called or probably won't, won't call again, an emergency situation, um, if there are situations like an uptick um, in the numbers, the chairmans of those boards have the ability with the rest of the board to to go remote, however, and Rich, you, you're probably gonna eventually get there. Um, we do have to have some semblance of presence in town hall so that if public wants to be there to speak, they can. So that would mean Rich may end up having to be in town hall or something, um, during the rest of us zooming. Is that correct, Rich? Is that what you're, where you're headed?
No, I was, I was heading to the point, if we go strictly to Zoom meetings, we're gonna do like we did tonight. The public can't speak at that meeting. Right now, the, the public cannot speak at these meetings if we're, if we're meeting in town hall and they zoom in, they're not allowed to participate. They can just listen. But if we go to a straight Zoom meeting, I'll let them participate. It's only fair. If we're all gonna meet on Zoom, the other option is that y'all can meet on Zoom and I can go to town hall and people can come in.
Right.
I'm game either way. I'm, any of those three options, I don't care, but I wanted to make that decision as a board. I don't, I'm not into the heavy handed, this is how we're gonna do it.
Rich?
Yeah, Marty.
When we were on Zoom before, I think we had a better presentation and communication with the town. Because the fact is that anybody wants to come in, they can, they don't have to speak, but they can a- actually listen in along the way.
Mike agrees with you.
Yep.
What it was.
I wouldn't be a board member unless you were doing Zoom.
And Marty, we said that at the initial meeting with the selectmen and at the time they rejected it and we all wanted to continue as uh, zooming because we had so much more participation.
And I, I went to, I went to the Board of Selectment, I discussed it with them and I received um, an email telling me that that was a decision that the chairman could make, that we would go back to, to being on Zoom. They, they weren't gonna force us to gather face to face.
Yeah. Yeah, Paul. Jay just say that there was a new law that got passed, cause when we first went back, the law was we had to meet in person, once the emergency went away. But it sounds like the legislature passed a new law that now gives it back to you or to the chairs and the towns to make their own decision. Is that right?
So, yeah, so there, if, it was very confusing because we've had many conversations with our, with our attorney at SNPDC about this. But believe it or not, the way the law was written was that if you didn't pass, if you didn't pass a local policy um, regarding your zooming, within thirty days of the passage of the law, you had to meet in person until such time that the policy was adopted and the doc, the policy had to be adopted in person, um, before you could go back to Zoom. Um, and so it was a matter of timing with the select board developing or, or adopting the policy that many other towns have done. Um, Agonquit is full Zoom on their planning board. They, they never went back in person.
I vote to Zoom.
I vote to Zoom because that's part of my training.
Explains why we have the option now, right?
Correct.
It was there before. I went to, when I went to the training this summer, the, the training people said that this was now the policy, just had to be adopted in. That's what I thought we were discussing with the selectmen when I went to the meeting and it was already decided.
Yeah.
So that policy was already, that law was already an option back when that expired. You just had to make the policy. So I mean, that's something we could have done from day one if we made the policy ourselves as a planning board.
Rich?
Hang on, Marty. I'm trying to get some feedback from Jamie.
I really don't have a strong preference either way.
Okay.
I enjoy, I enjoy meeting in person, um, but I'm as winter sets in, I'm comfortable sitting here on my sofa.
There you go. I, I understand that. I, I tend to agree. I love to get together and face to face. It's a lot more fun. But it is really nice to think that, you know, when I turn the camera off, I'm fifteen steps away from the living room.
Rich?
Marty?
I think we've had a better discussion and be able to hear each other. And along the way, are the Board of Selectmen willing to allow us to do this?
Yes.
That's the next question.
My, my understanding of the email that I got from Keith concerning this whole issue was that it's up to me.
I vote yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it up to everybody else, cause I don't.
Oh, we have a quorum, right?
Yeah. Stay zooming.
Do you need a motion, Rich?
Yes, let's, let's make a motion and.
Susan made a motion. You've got one on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry, Susan.
I said I moved that we stay zooming, please.
And I'll second that. Susan, second Susan.
Susan squared.
Susan, the second Susan's, uh, right.
I gotta hear you explain this one out. Okay, so we've got, we've got a motion and a second that we resume Zoom meetings. We should. We should, we should decide at what point we will go back to face to face.
Why don't we wait and see what happens with the pandemic?
Can I revise my, my um, my motion? I move that we, that we zoom currently until the pandemic. Changes to the point where the cases are down inconsistent within the state of Maine.
Safety wise.
Will the second agree?
Yes, the second seconds, the second.
The second.
The second Susan.
That's the second time Susan has seconded Susan.
The second Susan. Right, seconded the fir-, whatever.
Okay.
We got double Susans as a yes.
Is there any discussion?
I want to change my name to Marty. Yeah.
There we go.
Right. Now, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will start meeting on the sixteenth on Zoom meetings.
Yay.
And then we will, Lee, Lijie knows about it. I'm sure he'll appreciate it. He'll, I'll, I'll let Anne know about it and send her.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I have no problem with it because it's less commuting for me, so. Thank you.
Paper too, to be honest, unless you wanted the paper. You mean, you're actually, we're talking about conservation over and over again. This allows us to actually have things that if we want to print, then have them in print, we can go get them in print or we can have them digitally.
Yep.
So I move that we adjourn.
Is there anything else, Lee?
Uh, for me, Marty, I'm good. I'm all set.
Nothing for me. At some, at some point, I will bring up an idea about uh doing buffers on subdivisions.
I would love.
On the main road, twenty-five feet on the main road needs to be fixed. But we can deal.
Can I ask a quick question that's not, and does not, like, I, I, I never know, I have a community question.
Okay.
Um, when, and then this is just a general quick question, it doesn't have any backing to it. When you're doing um paving of roads, doesn't it have to be done by November first?
I've no idea.
No, Susan. Usually it has to be done as long as the, the plants are still processing and the temperature.
So there's no date, it just has to be done before it's frozen.
So, yeah, so unless the, there's an ordinance at the local level that says paving must be done by X date. Um, usually pavers, pavers being the contractors or whoever. Try to work as long into the winter as they can. If it's a mild winter, the batch plants stay open. And allows them to continue to do that. If the batch plants close down, then there's paving is shut down.
Okay, so there's no date, it's just basically when it's ability.
Correct. Unless, again, unless there's a local ordinance I'm not aware of in town that says you must be done paving by X date.
I didn't know if there was a date due to potentially, again, having to petition the town to have a town be a road. If it has to be done within a certain date of, I, I had heard November first, but it could have been just the thought versus the reality. She said I'm saying, that's why I was.
I believe before the town connects, if there's gonna be an acceptance of a way. After its final paving code is down, it how, you have to wait ten months.
Gotcha.
Um, but.
Again, quick question, I was just curious.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we have a motion.
We have a motion to, to adjourn. And now we have a second.
Oh, Susan seconded Susan's.
All right, guys, have a good couple of days until.
All right, everybody.
And we'll see you all in two weeks.
Good night, all.